Evening councillors, officers, members of the public. Before we commence this evening's meeting, could I draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me? And also, please, could you make certain that your mobile phones are switched to silent? Thank you. Item one of the agenda, the minutes. Minutes of the meeting which took place on the 9th of February have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as the correct record of that meeting? Thank you very much, I shall do that at the end. Apologies for absence, have there been any apologies for absence?
Thank you Chairman, we've had apologies from councillors Stella Anderson-Payne, Stephen Hill and Pat Frost.
Thank you very much. And now declarations of interest, have members declared any interest before the meeting?
None before the meeting, Chair.
Do members have any other non-percenary or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare in relation to the matters this evening? No, good. Have there been any questions received from members of the public?
None, Chairman.
Officers, particular Elizabeth, are there any updates to government guidance or legislation of which we should be aware?
Thank you Chairman, there are none in relation to the items on this agenda, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The table relating to the Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area has been updated with the latest SANG figures. Elizabeth, would you like to add anything to this?
Nothing to add to the report, thank you Chairman.
I recall that two meetings ago, after councillor Steele raised a question, councillor Potts agreed to go to the executive member and come back with an answer. She didn't come back last time, and councillor Steele wasn't here last time, and she isn't here again today, so again, we will have to wait patiently for an answer on that. Members, do you have any other point on the SANG? In that case, are you content to note the update? Thank you very much. We move on to the applications for planning permission. First of all, site visits. In the event of any site inspections being necessary, as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Tuesday the 13th of April 2015, at a time to be agreed. Moving on to the actual applications, we have one application which is subject to public speaking and one which is not. First of all, item A1, on page seven of the agenda. It's the erection of a dwelling and garage, together with alterations to vehicular access and associated works to include an additional vehicular access off Avaley Lane, extensions and alterations to the existing dwelling, land at Heron Court, 39 Ford Lane, Wrecker Shill. Rachel, would you like to introduce this application to the committee, please?
Thank you Chair. The application site you will see outlined in red on screen, it is located at the junction of Avaley Lane, Middlebourne Lane and Ford Lane. The site is currently garden land, which serves the existing dwelling, Heron Court. Heron Court, the existing dwelling, is a locally listed building. The proposed site layout is on screen, you'll see in a dark red are the existing buildings indicated for you. The application proposes a new access off Avaley Lane, to serve the new dwelling. The existing access off Ford Lane would be retained to serve the existing dwelling, Heron Court. I'll outline a few distances for you. This is a new proposed dwelling, it's labelled as Ford House, on your screen and plans. There would be a distance of twelve metres between the two facing elevations of Ford House and Heron Court. That's a distance of seven metres to the boundary, which is dotted faintly, you'll see on screen just here. And this is a new garage to serve the new dwelling, which has a distance of two and a half metres to the boundary. You'll see in a sort of dark yellow colour, the extensions proposed to Heron Court. On screen now is a layout which was for the previously refused scheme, reference 2014-1473. There are a total of four reasons for refusal in relation to that application, which included harmful setting of Heron Court and development out of keeping of the low-density character of the area. In comparison to that refused scheme, the current proposal before you involves a reduction from two to one dwellings on site. The new dwelling would be of a different size, scale and position to the two dwellings you see on screen. It includes this time, extensions to Heron Court. The boundary between Heron Court and, in this case, the singular new dwelling, would be positioned further north, and the access off Avaley Lane would be positioned further north also. This is a site perspective of the proposed scheme. Shaded in grey are the existing buildings. You'll see here the extensions proposed to Heron Court, and the proposed new dwelling to the rear. These are the proposed elevations for the new dwelling. It would have a depth of 12.9 metres and a overall height of 8.4 metres. The proposed floor plans are on screen. The house would be spread over two floors and a basement, have a total of five bedrooms, with an internal floor area of 384 square metres. The proposed garage to serve the new dwelling, have a pitched roof with half hips and would measure six metres ridge height. The proposed extensions to Heron Court, the elevations for those are on screen, and those are the coloured sections you'll see on the plan. They involve two-storey rear and side extensions, and they would add a further four and a half metres to the overall width of the dwelling. And those are the floor plans. To the rear, you'd see as an existing outbuilding, in red you'll see the extensions, and they would link the existing outbuilding to the dwelling. This is the proposed elevation from Ford Lane. You'll see faintly on screen the ridge line of the new dwelling, which will be visible from a distance. And you'll also note the topography on the site, as it slopes from the main house down to the junction at Avaley Lane. This is a plan, apologies if not the clearest, showing the proposed Avaley Lane elevation. It's got gated entrance, you'll see in the centre of the screen, and you'll see post and rail fencing would be added. It gives, this plan really serves to demonstrate a lot of landscape alterations that would be required in order to facilitate the new vehicular access into the site. An existing photo, which shows you the view along Ford Lane, and the application site just on the left. The entrance gates to Heron Court. You've some further views of Heron Court, the front and rear elevations. The application does propose to make a number of internal improvements to Heron Court. On screen you'll see Avaley Lane, those who have been along will know it's quite a narrow lane, as you can see, generally it's a single track in terms of passing. The proposed access will come off this road. By providing that new access, it would, in practical terms, provide an additional passing point for vehicles using that lane. The plans submitted demonstrate that a private car would be able to turn into and out of the proposed site access safely, travelling in both directions on to Avaley Lane. There are refuse and delivery vehicles which already travel along Avaley Lane to serve the existing dwellings on that road. Here we've got the side elevation, which where the extension would come off Heron Court, roughly they would come in line with the edge of that grass area you can see just in I'll take you now to the determining issues, which you'll see set out on screen, they're divided into two columns, the matters of principle and technical judgment, and the matters of judgment. The principle of development on this site may be considered acceptable, subject to the impact on visual and residential amenities. The proposal would make a small contribution to the housing land supply. And the proposed access on to Avaley Lane would be acceptable in respect to highway safety, and would include sufficient parking for the existing and proposed dwelling. Any permission would be the subject of an appropriate legal agreement being completed in respect of the SPA. In respect of the matters of judgment, the proposed dwelling and the extensions are considered to be of an appropriate scale, form and design, and to be in keeping with the character of the area. The proposal would preserve existing views of a locally listed building, Heron Court. This is partly achieved by providing that additional access off Avaley Lane. And officers consider that the extensions and the new dwelling would serve to preserve the setting and primacy of Heron Court. That is obviously also a judgment for members to reach. The proposal includes a number of internal works to Heron Court. Officers consider that the proposal would be acceptable in planning terms, with or without those internal works to Heron Court. However, if members do consider that the proposal would result in some degree of harm to the setting of Heron Court, and that this harm could in their view be outweighed by the works to Heron Court, then that is something which could be reasonably controlled by condition. The proposal would provide sufficient amenity space for both dwellings, and would be acceptable in respect of its impact on trees. If I could take you now to the update sheet, which you'll have in front. There has been a submission of three additional plans, which provide further information in respect of the proposed elevation on to Avaley Lane and the vehicular entrance into the site. The plans demonstrate that satisfactory vehicular access could be achieved, and this has been confirmed by the County Highway Authority. The update also notes a correction to one paragraph of the report and an additional letter from the applicant. There have been six additional letters of objection received. And for clarity, an amended construction transport statement would be required by condition to be agreed with officers and the County Highway Authority. That would include details such as the size of vehicles, of construction vehicles, and their routing and timing of access to the site. That aside, the letters of objection do not raise any new material considerations to those already covered in the main report. There is also another update in relation to, in response to recent correspondence, which members may have seen. There is an application with English Heritage to consider a national listing for Heron Court. That application is still being considered, and the outcome of that is not likely to be known for potentially a couple of weeks yet. English Heritage have been made aware of the timescales in relation to this application on several, on several times. As it stands, the application, pardon me, the council and members are required to assess the application based on its current status as a locally listed building. The recommendation is therefore that subject to the applicant entering into an appropriate legal agreement in respect of the SPA by the 13th of March, and subject to conditions two to twenty-six on pages thirty-three to forty-three. An amended condition one on drawing numbers are set out on page four of the update sheet, and informatives one to seven on pages forty-three to forty-four that permission be granted. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Rachel. This item is subject to public speaking. I understand that those who will be speaking have had the procedures explained, so please, can I invite the objector, Mr Coombs, to speak, please? Good evening, Mr Coombs, you have three minutes to speak from when you start.
Mr Vice-Chairman, councillors, we very much regret that given the lack of pre-application consultation, the only channel for our views has been the submission of formal objections to this latest proposal. Since this goes some way towards meeting objections to the previous scheme, some agreement might have been reached before formal submission, had there been engagement with those who will be most affected by its implementation. But despite at least one request, no local resident, so far as we know, was allowed sight of the plans before their formal submission, and the applicant made no attempt to initiate consultation. This is in clear breach of paragraph sixty-six of the National Planning Policy Framework. Applicants will be expected to work closely with those directly affected by their proposals. Nevertheless, objects would still like to avoid unnecessary contention. The possibility of one new house on the plot, if suitably scaled and positioned, has now been accepted. But one of the principal grounds for the previous refusal was the overbearing character of Ford House, with its huge scale, its position immediately behind the old house, and its extensive encroachment on Heron Court's back garden. The last defect has been mitigated in the latest plan, but not eliminated. The issue of scale remains. A house significantly further to the east, on a less grandiose scale, would secure the primacy and the longer-term future of Heron Court. The officer's report claims that access to the new house from Avaley Lane would preserve the view of the old house from the road. This is utterly baffling. A shared access would require only a right-of-way across Heron Court's extensive forecourt, not a physical structure obstructing vision. It would have no effect whatsoever on the view of the house. And if preservation of the current appearance is an overriding priority, why recommend consent for an eastern extension which would change the appearance considerably? That proposed extension has caused concern on the grounds of design, rather than resistance to all change. Its large bays would not harmonise with the present frontage, nor is it placed in the most satisfactory position for an extension. Access by right-of-way across Heron Court's forecourt would avoid damage to the sylvan character of Avaley Lane, and the reduction in the area required for a new driveway could release more usable garden space, permitting some beneficial reconfiguration of boundaries. The new proposal is a move in the right direction, and had there been consultation, a more acceptable plan might have evolved.
Thank you, Mr Coombs, and congratulations on your timing. Can I now invite Town Councillor Carl Gentiani to speak? Good evening councillor, you have three minutes.
Farnham Town Council now accepts that this particular site is not covered by policy BE3, but still strongly objects to this application. The area is one of low density, and the council has consistently opposed the loss of large gardens when they form part of the character of the area. The confusion about the size of the plot is not altogether surprising, as the sale was completed in total secrecy and the new boundary was not clear. However, this has now been clarified for all. Heron Court has been put forward for national listing due to its historic importance. Any application on this site must be of a scale which enhances the original house. Indeed, Farnham Town Council would go further and say that the only suitable development on this site would be an enabling development which seals the future of this local asset by condition. It is pleasing to see that this application is for a single house, and that the building has been moved away from Woodland Drive. However, the scale of the proposed Ford House is out of all proportion to Heron Court, and will completely dwarf the original building. Modest additions to Heron Court and a new house of equally modest size might be acceptable on this prominent site. Farnham Town Council remains concerned about the access on to Avaley Lane. It is steep and narrow at the suggested point of access, and cannot be the safer option. A more imaginative approach to a shared drive with Heron Court should be explored. In brief, Farnham Town Council feels that this application is premature and not designed to make the best use of the site, given the importance of the original building. A comprehensive but modest development of Heron Court, enabled by the construction of a modest family home, would not detract from the character of this site and shrouding area on Ford Lane. By retaining the Green Bank on Avaley Lane, the predominant character of that lane would remain, and the safety of the current users not jeopardised. Thank you.
Thank you Councillor Gentiani. Can I now invite the agent, Mr De Corsi, to speak? Good evening, Mr De Corsi, like the others, you also have three minutes.
Thank you Chairman. We listened carefully to councillors' comments relating to the previous application on this site at the November meeting. It was made very clear by those speaking that one dwelling and improvements to Heron Court would be acceptable on this site, and this is what we are now proposing with this application. I wish to comment on the previous speaker's comments, I'm pleased that they have clarified the situation with regard to policy BE3. As a matter of fact, the site, the strip of land which I think was mentioned by the town council, was excluded from the previous application, I wish to clarify that. And I'll also point out that the property is not listed, and you'll note that their comments refer to the building being listed. Whilst there is a request pending, officers have clarified most clearly that it is in a matter that can be considered. This is a building of local merit, and we also point out that both your conservation office and applicant's heritage adviser consider that the building warrants no more than the local designation. The town council's objection claims that dwelling is out of proportion, but this is not the views shared by your planning and heritage officers, who we have worked with closely to try and ensure this application addresses the views of the committee. Your officers advise in the report that the proposed dwelling is appropriate in scale, form, design, and would be in keeping with the character of the area, as well as the proposed extensions to Heron Court. Furthermore, the report advises that officers are satisfied that the proposal would preserve the setting and primacy of Heron Court. Therefore, the advice of your professional advisers is clear and unequivocal, and we urge that this advice is adhered to. We also highlight that the proposed dwelling is comparable in size with many others in the area, and the plot larger than most adjoining developments. Members were seen on the site visit that boundary treatments along Avaley Lane would screen the dwelling from the lane, and views from Ford Lane would be also largely obscured by Heron Court. We note also that sixteen letters of representation have been made in respect of this application, which contrasts with the sixty representations received in respect of the previous scheme, indicating that majority of the previous respondents are now content with the proposals before you. Due to the delay in gaining planning permission, my client now wishes to build the new house for himself and his family, and if approved, having already sold his existing property, would start work immediately and not pursue the option for two dwellings on the site. My client would then have an vested interest in ensuring that Heron Court was not left to fall to further decay, and would commence at the works of Heron Court at the same time as the works of the new house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr De Corsi. Members, over to you. Councillor Lee.
Thank you Chairman. I'm not going to take too long at the outset, because I feel I can go on for some time with this one. I know the area very well, it's in my ward, and I was at the site visit yesterday, and I've heard the information that's I think necessary for me to make a decision on this, I don't want to go and say that just yet, but the issues that I've got with this, particularly if it's size. And also, something hasn't happened, I think, that really could have been avoided with regard to the size. I'm delighted it's one dwelling on the site, in comparison to two, I think that's great news. And I'm not delighted by the size of it in scale, and I'm more than unhappy with the proximity of it to the new division of the land, looking at the twelve metres. Standing there yesterday, that gable is massive, and it's close, and it is just too close, in my opinion, to that boundary. So those are the main issues, notwithstanding the access. And I'm baffled by the access, and actually, I stood there yesterday on the land, and I thought, okay, is it going to work? And when I drove up at the end of the site meeting and just sat outside it, I think it's a recipe for chaos. And so, I don't think that's been thought through as well as it could be, which again, may have been avoidable, had we ever had a suitable procedure at the pre-application stage. There seems to be an element of secrecy there, which is possibly why we're, or why I feel that I need to raise these issues as we speak. So, I've sort of put some food for thought for other councillors, I think, and it's probably about time they had a say too. Thank you Jim.
Thank you Councillor Lee. Councillor Coburn.
Yes, thank you, I thought I'd give my colleague a chance to speak, but I think we're roughly going to say the same thing. I'm actually terribly, terribly disappointed with this. I was thrilled. Well, let's go back one stage further, as councillor Lee has said, I think one of my frustrations has been my lack of input on this site the whole time. And in fact, when I asked the officer, when this new application came in, how much pre-application talks there had been, I gathered not a great deal even with the officers, and I have in writing that even they were surprised at the scale of the house that came in. Now, to me, if you're having proper pre-application talks, the councillor should be included, we won't always get what we want, but we can feed in local knowledge. This house, I've known for years, I used to walk my children past this house, years ago, my children now have grandchildren of the same age that my children were. The house has always been, Heron Court, a house you've noticed, and we've watched it go into states of disrepair, but we know the house well, and it's always sat so neatly on that corner. The residents' association flagged it up to me even before it was on the market, that, you know, it was going to probably come on to the market, and that we had to do something to protect this site. It's a well-loved site, the history, it's difficult to find some of the history, but it does go back centuries, and it's just such a feature of this area, this little corner, as you go around, you just know Heron Court as you pass it, everyone does. I would accept, as I said last time, an enabling development on this site. I don't like enabling developments, but if they do enable something good to happen, then you have to accept them. But I don't see this as being an enabling development, and I don't think the developer has put it forward as an enabling development. And again, I did ask the officer some time back about how strongly we can condition things on this site to make sure that we end up with two really good houses on this site, and I haven't seen anything that reassures me that that is necessarily true, there isn't a condition to do it, and we haven't had reassurance in writing exactly what's going to happen on this site. I think we have, I'm probably repeating what I said last time, we have these buildings, there aren't hundreds of them, they are our heritage, and we should treasure them. If we get rid of them, if we diminish their setting, we're diminishing not just the history that we should... that we share, but the history for the future generations that walk past it on their way to school, and we saw a lot of schoolchildren yesterday. So I don't like, I don't see why there's a side extension to Heron Court. I think there's something to be said for improving the back of Heron Court, which is not its best feature. I agree with councillor Lea, I think the proximity is far too close, caused, of course, by the sheer size of it, and I have never understood that entrance from Averley Lane. I just don't see it. I, having driven up there, I don't know how many times, to go and see friends on Averley Lane, it is really close, and one of the friends lives just round the bend at the top, and anybody who's been up that lane, and I don't know quite how you ever get round it safely, because if you do meet something on the bend, you'd hit, but somehow people get up there and just about manage to avoid each other. But it is a very, very dangerous lane, it's a hill, it's narrow. I just feel so disappointed that we haven't made a better fist of something on this site, given the site, given the need to preserve Heron Court. I think this is not the best use of the site. I listen to everything that the residents say around about shared access, about scale, and I think we could do something better. I know the applicant says that no trees have been removed or very few, I mean, they have, you know, they've gone. Now, I'm not attributing blame to anybody, but that site is not as it was, so something has happened to it. And I think to take away that bank on Averley Lane and then see a hollowed-out piece of green behind a listed building, I just think we can do so much better on that site. Do you know, I actually lost a bit of sleep last night on this. I woke up at four o'clock and the first thing that came into my head was this planning application, which is, you know, a bit scary really, but it was just obviously on my mind that this is just not right. It's a darn sight better than it was before, the residents in Woodland Drive are less affected, but, I'm sorry, I just can't support it. I just think we've got to take our listed buildings, our locally listed buildings, sorry, our heritage. I also think, if we're talking two weeks, I really do think perhaps the town council has a point, and this is premature.
A lot has been said. I'm a trustee of Surrey Heritage Buildings, and it's a fact that Farnham has more buildings, Grade One, Grade Two listed, and buildings of merit than any other place in Surrey. That will not happen unless we preserve this, as councillor Coburn said, for future generations. We haven't got a very good record at the moment. Brightwell House is the classic example. There is one other that I know, and now this one is the third. English Heritage would never agree that a building such as this should have something built next to it only twelve metres away. It's far too close. This building, which is built in the seventeenth century, deserves the plot of the whole size. This is not an enabling development, so we can forget that. If people buy the house and can't afford to upkeep it, then that's not our fault, and we shouldn't therefore have to agree to build a building so close to what should be preserved and probably will be grade-listed in just a few weeks, which will mean that it has to be upkept. That will be the law then, and it will be kept in a manner that will preserve it. Also, of course, this is, once again, garden development, and everybody here knows I'm very much against garden development. So I am very much against this. I don't think the extension, particularly the side extension, does anything to preserve the character of the house as it originally was. It should be left. Maybe you could get away with the rear extension, but not to build a house just twelve metres away. That's absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you, councillor Steele. Any other comments? In that case, we will move on to the recommendation. We're looking at the revised recommendation A, which is that, subject to the applicant entering into an appropriate legal agreement in respect of the special protection area by the thirteenth of March, and subject to the amended condition one, which just is amended for drawing numbers, as set out on page four of the update sheet, and conditions two to twenty-six on pages thirty-three to forty-three, and informatives one to seven on pages forty-three to forty-four of the original agenda, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
There's none in favour.
Those against?
Five against.
And there aren't any abstaining, because that's everybody. Thank you, members. This application has been rejected. We therefore, we need to call for you to put forward the usual reasons for the refusal, and we will put forward another recommendation to refuse on those grounds. councillor Coburn.
They're not dissimilar to the last, certainly the harm caused to a heritage asset, building of local merit. By the scale, I don't know how much detail we need to go into, but I'm sure the officers could do that, but, you know, the harm to the setting of a heritage listed building, locally listed building.
councillor Steele.
Just like to add the point I made, that to build a building just twelve metres away from such a building of heritage is completely wrong and against English Heritage's advice.
councillor Coburn wanted to come back.
Chairman, I was just going to put some words to fill out the suggestion that councillor Coburn already made, but I think it might be helpful to hear any other suggestions, and I'll come in at the end if that's helpful. Thank you.
councillor Lea.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm seeking guidance really from Elizabeth. I understand that Highways have approved the access, so it would be foolish of me to say that's wrong, but I don't agree with it. However, what I would like to probably put forward is that actually I would not be opposed to access coming from the front, as I think was previously discussed. I know that may be not what they want, but actually I think that's much more pragmatic and sensible, and it's something that I would be able to support. And certainly, the boundary is my big issue and the proximity to the boundary for the size of the dwelling. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, councillor Lea. councillor Coburn.
Again, I'm not sure how to phrase this, but I gather from Surrey that they look just at the safety and that the sort of gouging out of the bank is a planning matter as opposed to, and I object to the destruction of the character of Averley Lane by this. It just seems absolutely criminal to me to gouge out this enormous great bank. I mean, Averley Lane has its problems, but it's charming when you get through it, and I just feel that it completely destroys the, I can't really use silver because there's no trees as such, well, I suppose there are, but you know what I mean, the greenness, the green boundary, just to have that sort of gouged out. So I'm not quite sure in planning terms what that is, but I think it was Richard Cooper who did say that was a planning matter, the destruction of the bank.
And I'd just like to throw in that I thoroughly dislike the extension to Heron Court, that I think its nature and character and design is completely at odds to the existing building, despite what our own heritage officer says. councillor Lea.
Sorry, Chairman, one more thing. I would like to see this as enabling. I really do. I think it's necessary. I know we have a two-week window, but I think enabling is a requirement for me to be supportive of it. Otherwise, we could end up seeing an application in due course for another three homes on that particular part, and we'd be fighting that one down the road. So enabling for me would be a big advantage.
Over to you, Elizabeth.
Notwithstanding what you said already, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could come back on that point first and then the highway point, and then perhaps suggest some further words around reasons for refusal. In terms of requesting it only to be an enabling proposal, I think we need to be careful because enabling development is generally put forward as a reason for overcoming an absolute obstacle in planning terms, which is set aside in favour of delivering something which is perceived to be a planning benefit. For example, restoration of a historic building with dwellings, where the dwellings are unacceptable in principle because they're in the green belt, for example. An example of that you may recall would be the Moor Park development, not too far from here relatively. In this particular instance, whilst there is a lot of concern about the development of the house on this plot, it is in the developed area, it isn't in the BE3 area. What is is on garden land and taking councillor Steele's concern into account, there isn't an absolute constraint on this site in terms of residential development. It is a judgment of members as to whether or not they feel the site can accommodate a dwelling. And therefore, you're not in a position to be saying you're setting aside a policy objection and would only consider a proposal acceptable if it were proposed together with enabling development or on the basis of enabling development. So I think it would be probably unreasonable to take the view we're not accepting anything unless it comes forward as enabling development on that basis. Having said that, I think the reasons that have been put forward, raising concerns about the elements of the scheme that you have, can be constructed in terms of valid reasons for refusal, which can be defensible on any appeal, and I'll perhaps suggest some wording around that. What I would say in relation to the Highways point, I think councillor Coburn's question whether that could constitute a reason for refusal, quite rightly, the Highway Authority are only commenting, of course, on matters of highway safety, but if you do feel that the, notwithstanding the officers' advice, the position and the impact of creating that new access will cause harm in amenity terms to the character of the site, that, of course, could be included in your objection in visual terms. And I suggest that if that is your concern, you combine it with your other concerns about the visual impact of the development. So taking that all into account, I would recommend a reason for refusal. Oh, sorry, shall we?
councillor Steele.
You mentioned basically that this is a plot and the area, et cetera, allows you to do this, et cetera. This is a seventeenth-century house. It's not just any old house on the plot in an area where you can build and extend. This is a house that we should preserve, we should look after for the future, and it should stand in its own grounds without being overlooked, and I think we've got to get that point firmly across.
councillor Lea.
councillor Steele, that's exactly my point, my next point really. Whilst it is an unusual property, that, I think, allows scope for us to offer. I feel very aware that we're going to have something built here, and I understand councillor Steele's irritation at that, I share that, but I'm pragmatic and I think something will go there one day. And I would just like to think that actually the heritage of Heron Court, that that is enough to offer a scope to go back to the developer and say, would you consider, if nothing else, at the pre-application stage of offering support for that building? By its very nature, it's not a bog-standard building anywhere. So not conditioning it as such, but actually, just at this point, for the record, making everybody aware that that would be a good thing for a proposal in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lea. That, of course, is not something we can put into the recommendation. councillor Coburn.
Sorry, Mrs Sims, you were always about to speak. No, the other thing I find, and again, I don't know if we can defend this in planning terms, but, you know, the building that's proposed behind Heron Court, to me, is out of keeping, not just in scale, but also in material and design. And, you know, again, the report says more or less that, but, and I don't like these reports that say, you know, the new one is rather large and it's, you know, not built in the same materials and it's in contrasting style, but it's okay. I don't think it is okay on this site at all. I think anything on this site must complement the style and the scale of the existing development, which, as councillor Steele has said, is something we should be fighting to preserve. So I think really the inappropriate scale and materials and design, any of that, that I think it's just out of keeping. It would look nice somewhere else, I have no problem with the design as such, but not on this site.
Are we done, members? Back to you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Chairman. So I would suggest the proposal, including the proposed new dwelling, the extension to Heron Court, and the proposed new access, by virtue of their size, scale, proximity to the boundary, materials and design, and effect on the frontage of the site, that takes into account the impact of the highway access, would appear as dominant and intrusive development, which would cause material harm to the character and setting of the adjacent building of local merit and the character and the amenity of the surrounding area. There are no benefits that have been proposed that would outweigh the identified harm to the heritage asset, and as such, the proposal would conflict with policies D1, D4, HE3 and HE5 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002 and paragraph 135 of the NPPF. Thank you, Chairman.
Wonderful, as always. We need a proposal, please, for the refusal of this planning application on those grounds. Would somebody like to propose that? Thank you, councillor Lea, seconded by councillor Coburn, thank you very much. So I put to you, members, that this application be refused on the grounds that were explained so well by Mrs Sims. Those in favour of the proposal?
There's five in favour.
That's unanimous, and that this is refused on those grounds. We move on now to item B1, page forty-five of the agenda. Wait a few moments whilst public gallery empties.
And just before the members of the public go, we just need to reinforce the fact that because the applicants on that last matter haven't signed their legal agreement, we'd need an additional reason for refusal on failure to sign the SPA legal agreement. Thank you for that.
So do we need to look at recommendation B or?
No, because they're refusing, because the committee are refusing it. It's added on as a recommendation, as a reason for refusal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Steele.
While we've got a bit of a lull in the proceedings, can I ask for some advice? I always understood that highways make a, well, they make a recommendation on a site, an access, et cetera. Councillors actually make the decision, it's not binding on us. And if we think highways have got it wrong, we can jolly well say they've got it wrong, period. Is that so or not so? And that also applies, incidentally, to the heritage officer that we have here.
Thank you, councillor Steele. As far as I'm aware, we can decide on anything. However, if it's not a valid planning reason, then it's going to get thrown out anyway. Where we have been given technical advice, and I'm open to correction, but where we've been given technical advice, for example, on an issue of flooding or an issue of highways, then if we go against that technical advice at any future appeal, then we would be regarded as being unreasonable in not accepting that advice. But as I say, I'm open to correction on that.
Some while ago, I asked that every application notes whether highways have actually visited the site or whether they made their decision on looking at the plans. I can't help but think if the highways officers have visited the site, they would be of the same opinion as we are.
I can't answer that, councillor Steele. I don't know whether they did, whether they did visit or not, but I am aware that... but I am aware that they do regularly visit. You know, I have been concerned with a number of sites in Badgerley or in Webber, and the highways people have always been to actually look at the site.
Thank you, chairman, I just wondered if I could just add to that. Firstly, in defence of our colleagues at Surrey County Council Highways Team, they do visit most sites, and there's their absolutely minor forms of development which they feel they can give us standing advice on without actually visiting the site. If anything slightly controversial such as this can categorically confirm they do visit the sites. I know their advice sometimes isn't very welcome to us as a district, but the reality of it is, of course, they're assessing it against technical standards, and their advice as it is. In terms of whether we have the authority to override their view, of course, as planning authority, ultimately, the council is making its own mind up. And just picking up the point that the chairman has made, we would be likely to be found unreasonable on appeal if we overturn a technical reason for refusal that's recommended by them, unless we have alternative valid technical evidence to suggest they've got it wrong. And of course, we have had recent experience of that at Waverley, not necessarily in Western area, but where we have taken a decision to go against their advice, and we did pay a very heavy penalty at appeal, because even with an alternative traffic consultant trying to put forward the council's case, we didn't succeed in satisfying an inspector, and we were heavily penalised on appeal for not making a reasonable case. So there are risks involved, but it doesn't mean you don't have the power to disagree with them if you think that they have got it wrong. Thank you very much, chairman.
Sorry, just, thank you, chairman, may I? Yep. Elizabeth, on the question of enabling development, I understand exactly where you're coming from, and why we can't stipulate it as a condition. If an applicant was to offer it as a contractual arrangement, and enter into a bilateral contract, why are we not at large to accept that?
Thank you, chairman. If a proposal came forward whereby the applicant was arguing that the works to the listed building, as it may become, but it isn't at the moment, or the building of local merit, are required to be undertaken to ensure that its upkeep is maintained in a satisfactory way, but that in terms of the economics of that, they could only afford to do that on the basis of a capital receipt from the sale of the land, which they would sell off with a planning permission on, or something along those lines, they could submit that to you as an enabling development. If they did that, then we would want to be satisfied as officers that the case was sound, and we would expect, I think the report set out, to receive viability information about the fact that it couldn't happen anyway, that the only way in which these works could be carried out is if they could enable them to by developing the land in some other way. But I think the point I was making before is that, generally speaking, we wouldn't be able to say we're only going to allow this through an enabling development, because, one, the works could be carried out in any event, if the applicant can afford to do it. If it becomes listed, of course, we end up with other powers which would require the repairs to be carried out, essentially. But also, notwithstanding the concern about the development of the land in the developed area, some development could be potentially acceptable on that land. And so my point was, it's unreasonable to form a view that it's only going to be enabling development that could make this possible. That was the point I was making, thank you.
No, I appreciate that, and I'll be very, very brief, I'm very aware of time. In which case, why has it come in together on one application? That's the question I've got. It could be a separate application, in which case we would deal with it separately, but they've come in together on one application, that's why.
I think, chairman, we, we've tried to be very transparent about it, clearly, they have come in together, all we can do is, as officers, and then report to yourselves, that we are assessing the application on its merits, and there's nothing to stop any applicant putting forward different types of proposal in one application, putting them forward as two separate components. But what we did make clear in the report is that this is not enabling development, because they haven't submitted the relevant information, they haven't put it forward as an enabling case. There have been some suggestions about the fact that perhaps the works will be funded by the development, but as far as we're concerned, it is just one proposal with two components to it, which they're entitled to do if they so wish. And all we needed to do, to be clear to you, is that this is categorically not on the face of it an enabling development at this stage.
Thank you very much, I'm going to put a lead on it. Go on then.
You know, it's the same baffling point that sort of Martin's raised, and I, you know, I have the same problem with this particular application. You've got a locally listed building, a heritage building, and you've got a plot of land. The applicants come in for the whole plot of land, and yet we, as a group of people making a decision, have no guarantee that he's going to do anything other than build one house in the garden of a listed building and disappear. I'm not saying he's going to do that, but I'm saying, as a group of people making a decision, we have no certainty. If we had somebody like Millgate Homes buying up the whole lot, knocking down Heron Court and putting three houses on, you know they're going to build the three houses, I mean, it happens all the time, Tattingsstone, you can just name the places that this is happening, Whitecroft or whatever. But this is, there's always been the problem with this site, that, you know, you're telling us just to look at the building site for the one new build and just accept that, but it's attached, you know, it's in the curtilage of a heritage building. And this has always been the problem with this site. If it were a sort of a fairly bog-standard house, you know, you can say, well, somebody further down the line will pick it up and improve it, because that's what happens eventually to houses. But this has always been the tricky thing, the fact that they came in with these two, one locally listed building of local merit, one brand-new house, with no guarantee that both would happen, and I think that's been a really tricky thing with this.
Okay, we must move on. This is all, it's all very, very interesting, but it's not on the agenda. Can we then move on to page 45 and item B1? And Gemma is going to introduce it to us.
Thank you, chair, members. The site lies to the north of Echo Barn Lane and to the east of Quennills Hill, in a predominantly residential area of Farnham. The proposal seeks permission for a part-first-floor, part-two-storey front and side extension, which would partially extend over the existing flat-roof garage, the erection of a single-story rear extension, and the installation of a pitched roof over the remaining front of the flat-roof garage. The following slides show the extent of the proposed built form upon the host dwelling. Just take you back, sorry, to the existing elevation. Moving on to the proposed elevation, you'll notice the first-floor extension above the existing garage. The existing floor plans. And the proposed floor plans, the proposed built form is outlined in grey. There's an existing street scene, and a proposed street scene underneath, in order to compare. The following photographs show different viewpoints of the site. This is a view from the front curtilage of the site, number 44 Echo Barn Lane. You note that the garage is adjacent to a mono-pitched-roof garage, mono-hipped pitched-roof garage at number 42. This is a view from the rear curtilage of 42 Echo Barn Lane, you can see the flat-roof garage at the back, and noting the relationship with a neighbouring property. This is a close-up between the two relationships, the relationships between the two built forms. This is showing the extent of the boundary treatment directly adjacent to the patio area of number 42. This is now looking for the shared boundary at number 42 Echo Barn Lane, so this is standing at their boundary. Unfortunately, it's very difficult to get a further perspective, given the layout of their rear, but this will be the, you see existing here is the flat-roof garage, and the built form will go on top of this. Apologies for the quality of this photo, this is standing a little bit further back, near the garage of number 42 Echo Barn Lane, looking at the existing flat-roof garage of the site. And again, apologies for this photo, the quality of that, the sun was out that day. This is standing in the rear garden of number 42 Echo Barn Lane, again, looking towards the proposed site. Looking to the left of the slide, the matters of principle and technical judgment are the principle of the development, having regard to the site falling within the developed area of Farnham. Highways and parking provision, noting that the county highways authority have raised no objection against the proposal. And the effect on the SPA, as a domestic extension, the proposal would be unlikely to result in a significant increase in the number of people residing on the site permanently, and would therefore not have a significant effect. Moving to the right of the slide, members are asked to exercise their judgement with regards to the impact of the proposal upon visual amenity. Officers consider the proposed extension to respect the scale, form and proportions of the host dwelling. Although the bulk and mass of the proposed part-first-floor, part-two-storey front and side extension would result in the reduction of the spacious gap currently existing between the host dwelling and the built form of number 42 Echo Barn Lane, it should be noted that the proposal would still retain a visible gap between the two properties, allowing for a sense of space. Furthermore, as a result of the diversity of the built form within Echo Barn Lane street scene, there is no regularity to the visual gaps between the properties, and within this context, the reduction of the existing gap would not appear incongruous. In exercising judgement in regard to the impact of the proposal upon residential amenity, officers acknowledge that the bulk and mass of the proposed part-first-floor, part-two-storey front and side extension would have a greater presence upon the occupiers of 42 Echo Barn Lane than the existing situation. It is also acknowledged that the gap retained between the flank elevation of the proposal and the shared boundary of 42 Echo Barn Lane would not strictly adhere to the guidance of the council's residential extension SPD, which recommends a gap of no less than three metres between the two-story development and the shared boundary. However, there is flexibility within the guideline to reduce this distance, where it has demonstrated that non-important amenity space would be affected. As a result of the distance between the bulk and mass of the proposal and the ground-floor windows serving the primary accommodation associated with number 42 Echo Barn Lane, and given the extent of the private patio area of 42 Echo Barn Lane, in conjunction with the recommendation of conditions to safeguard neighbouring amenity, it is considered that the proposal would not cause significant harm to the amenities of the adjacent neighbouring properties. With regard to the upstate, the applicant has submitted an amended block plan to identify an existing pathway access to the rear of the garden of the site, as well as demonstrating a 45-degree daylight line relating to the windows at 42 Echo Barn Lane. And the proposed and existing street scene has also been submitted in support of the application. As a result of the submission of amended and additional plans, the recommendation has been revised to read that permission be granted, subject to amended condition one as shown on the update, conditions two to five on pages 62 of the agenda, and informative one shown on page 63 of the agenda. Thank you, chair.
Thank you, Gemma. Before we continue, woo, woo, woo. There, I believe that's actually in the, in 44 Echo Barn Lane, as are the next couple of pictures, just in case anybody was confused. Members, councillor Coburn.
Yes, I just wondered if we could just have the proposed street scene, just really, just to convince myself of what I'm going, yes, I think, so 42 has extended up to the boundary anyway, with a, yeah, I'm right, aren't I? Yeah, so, and 44 is actually not coming up quite as close to the boundary as the 42? Is that, that's, that's correct, okay. So you can sort of see, right, that's all I need to know.
Any other comments? No? Oh, well. Nice and quick then. Move on to the recommendation, which is that the revised recommendation, as detailed on your update report, subject to amended condition one as shown on the update, and conditions two to five on page 62 of the agenda, and the informative on page 63, permission be granted. Can I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant? That's unanimous. Then that is agreed. There are no items to consider in exempt session, so that concludes the meeting for this evening. Thank you very much, members, and thank you very much, officers. And thank you to the members of the public who've stayed right through to the very bitter end.